Well, hello everybody and thank you very much for registering and coming along to today's webinar. Before we start, I'd just like to begin by acknowledging the traditional custodians of the land from which I'm speaking to you from today. I'd also like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the lands from which each of our online attendees are living and working from, and pay my respects to their elders, past and present. I'd also wish to extend that same respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Island people with us here today also. By way of introduction, my name's Richard Wilson. I'm the Business Development Manager for Datacom IT. And joining me also from Datacom IT today is Christine Chetrefanti. Christine is Datacom IT's Marketing Manager and has been responsible for setting up today's event and all of the invites and correspondence. Also from Datacom IT is Roger Mills. Roger is Datacom IT's Digital Preservation Consultant, who also works on the implementation as the Project Manager for Recollect. And Roger will be facilitating the introduction or overview of that Recollect solution and the digital preservation component today. But our special guests, Melanie Rush, the Digital Archivist from Ipswich Libraries, and Tanya Jen, the Team Coordinator, Cultural History at the City Design Branch at Ipswich City Council. So as our special guest today, they will be both giving us a bit of an overview of their Recollect solution and the use of, or sorry, their heritage trails, but they're also utilizing the digital preservation module in Recollect. Just by, I guess, a bit of a background for those of you who aren't familiar who Datacom IT are and how Recollect fits into our picture. Datacom IT have over a 40-year history of providing digitization services here in Australia. So a large part of our business is in providing specialist digitization services to that glen sector, galleries, libraries, archives and museums, where we digitize all types of materials such as large format plans and maps and bound volumes and microfilm and microfiche. But another part of our business is both the equipment side where we're offering the equipment for clients to digitize their own material, whether they be book scanners or microfilm scanners. And then I guess the third component of that is our solutions area, where both Recollect and another product known as Preservica, which both have digital preservation components, form part of our solution suite. Although we're focusing on Recollect today and its digital preservation module, we do also have another solution that I talked about there, Preservica, which is purely dedicated to a digital preservation solution. And we have had some previous webinars on that solution that people may like to view if they're interested in that solution. But a bit of a more background, I guess, on Recollect and how it fits into the picture. Datacom IT aren't the developers of the Recollect solution with the Australian Partner for Recollect. And Recollect was actually developed originally by a company not too dissimilar to Datacom IT, based in New Zealand, known as New Zealand Micrographics. And it was developed originally out of a need for some of their clients who they're providing digitization services for, to provision an online solution for both the access and discovery of that digitized content, and has since evolved certainly quite a lot over the last six or seven years, to become a fully fledged software as a service solution. And at that time, when it actually became a standalone entity in its own right, that's when Datacom IT came on as the Australian Partner, as they look to expand both overseas into the US market and also into the UK. So at that time, Datacom IT came on board and have been responsible since 2019 for both the sales and the implementation of that Recollect solution. And I think we've just recently announced, or Recollect have recently announced, we have over 50 clients, Australian clients, for the Recollect, but I guess across the whole client base, there's well over 100 clients internationally using the Recollect solution. So that's a bit of a background on how Recollect fits in to Datacom IT and why we're here today, giving you an overview of this solution and digital preservation. I guess before I do hand over to Roger, just a little bit of a housekeeping on how to, I guess, engage with us and to ask any questions that you've got. If you're looking on your screen in the bottom right-hand corner, there's a chat box. So we do invite you, if you think of a question whilst Roger's providing his presentation or Melanie and Tanya, just please type it in as it comes to mind and then we'll actually, at the end, we'll hopefully have some time left there to circle back and review each of those questions and provide you with an answer. So please just free to type it in whenever it comes to mind and we'll come back and have a look at it then. So I will now hand over to Roger, who's going to give you that very brief introduction of the Recollect solution, not our full overview of the product itself, because we are focusing primarily on the digital preservation component. But I'll hand over to Roger now, who'll kick off our presentation for today.
Thanks very much, Richard, and I'm coming to you all from Gadigal land of the EORI Nation. Look, it's fantastic to be back with our webinar series for 2024. I can't believe it's already in March. But this one, as Richard said, is going to be focusing on digital preservation in the Recollect Collection Management Solution, as well as the innovative work that Ipswich Libraries have been doing with their heritage trails for Picture Ipswich. While most of our webinars are focused on a particular sector, this one is really geared to a broader glam audience. And looking at the registration list, I can see there are attendees with, probably have quite a knowledge about digital preservation already, and others who might be coming to digital preservation for the first time. My presentation aims to try and speak to both of you, but mainly how digital preservation is applied to Recollect as a contemporary dams and CMS. Also note that we've got some current administrators, Recollect administrators. So if you'd like some more information about adding the preservation module to your system, do get in touch and we'd be happy to facilitate that. If interested, as Richard said, our previous webinars have included a slightly more in-depth focus on digital curation and preservation as a standalone topic. And the last one was an introduction to the Preservica system. So perhaps Christine, you could put the YouTube channel link in the chat, if you would. All right. So for those of you who don't know anything about Recollect, oh, it's gone too far then. It's an online digital asset and collection management system as a unified platform. So what that means is that it brings together what those two systems usually do as separate technologies. So it stores all the digital assets in a database, makes them discoverable, as well as functioning as a collection management system to manage records and physical objects. It's really based around concepts of discoverability, access and engagement, as well as managing and preserving collections and archival materials. So it provides discoverability of content through descriptive metadata and Recollect's linked metadata model, which I'll speak to shortly, which allows for linking assets and records with information, subjects and topics, provides access to your collections by being able to view lots of different types of content in one platform and from any internet-connected device. And importantly, it allows your community to engage with your collections through moderated community contributions, tagging of images, suggested edits, comments, which we think can really enrich your collections. Of course, all of these community functions are moderated by administrators, but they can enrich your collections and really build what we like to think of as a storehouse of community knowledge. Of course, users can also share their knowledge and discoveries with their peers on social media. The database also allows administrators to store and manage data workflows, as well as preserving archival material through its digital preservation module, which is really what this session today is about. The system is a software as a service hosted by Amazon Web Services here in Sydney with an unlimited storage capacity, but you get a default entry point of a terabyte. There's no limit on the amount of users and it provides role-based access, tier privileges to edit and manage content, whether that's editing metadata, OCR transcriptions, moderation of contributions, reporting of site statistics, all within the ability to manage this into workflow. And it also has full trove integration. So while Recollect is a software, it also allows for customized design of your homepage using the discovery layer widgets for item formats, themes and collections of items. And while you'll see some similarities here in the Recollect sites on the screen, each design is based on the users or personas of each organization and the ways in which their implementation team thought their community would best wish to discover, access and engage with their content. You go through a series, when we implement Recollect for you, we go through a series of workshops where we identify your personas, look at your data, how you're going to structure that in Recollect, as well as how we're going to lay out the widgets on your homepage. So I'm not going to speak too much to Picture Ipswich, because I know Helen and Tanya will go into that very shortly. But essentially, what you have here is taxonomy dropdown menus, which are ideal for people who are just landing on the site for the first time. These are metadata-driven. You've got your carousel of featured items widget, which just takes you straight through into an item in Recollect. And you can see Melanie has been very busy there with adding image tags. And you can see all the metadata there on that right-hand side. You can see all of these links, which is all part of this linked metadata model that I'll talk to shortly. Underneath that, of course, you've got a very prominent search bar by keyword and what we call collection widgets. So you can create a collection of items such as sports and then bring into this collection all of the assets, be they images or other information items. It could be Queensland Times images in this case, maps and plans. Any asset that is related to this particular collection will be drawn into this, what we like to think of as an information hub. So you can discover all of this content in one sitting. So while that's a council library site, we've also done the Reserve Bank of Australia, a very hot topic these days. And you'll see some similarities there. They've had quite a bit of customization done to their site. The differences here are you can see that their carousel widget is moving through. You can also forward those images. They've got what we call the browser widgets, which allow you to jump straight into formats. Their personas were very research-oriented, so there's quite an introduction there that kind of tells the user where the research guides are, for instance, for each collection. They've got their collection widgets underneath that. And then there's showcase widgets. And these showcase widgets, you can curate on a weekly or daily basis. It just takes you straight through into one of those items. So they can sort of almost form the part of like a digital exhibition, if you like. Although Recollect does have an exhibition module as well. If we swap over now to a university site, the University of Melbourne Archives, they're storing a lot of their records. And so you'll find in the university records, using the series system, you've got a custom search there. So you can search within just this one collection. If you jump straight into this item here, you can see the way that these records have been structured. If you jump into that series, we can then have a look at those individual items if we wish. So university site, now we can jump over to a much, quite a different Recollect client, which is a small private school in Victoria, Kerry Baptist Grammar School with their collections. Again, you'll start to see some similarities between these sites. You've got your browser widgets along the top here, collection widgets, and then got a map, a GeoMap, which allows you to be able to overlay items based on the street address or GPS coordinates that you have latitude and longitude points for those individual items themselves, which just allows you to be able to create sort of locational context to your collections as well. So there's a very quick and speedy overview of the design and types of sites that we've implemented. And just to go to that linked data model that I've been sort of speaking to already, it's really about this kind of conceptual idea that you can connect an image to an event through links that allow for this serendipitous browsing. So you might have a photograph of a person that was taken at an event that obviously has a location. Or it could be that there's an oral history that has been given by someone at that event. There's documents and audio that are all related to those through these forward and backward relational links. And it's really through this linked data model that Tanya and Melanie have been able to create such a wonderful heritage trail experience in their Picture Ipswich site. Thought we might just jump really quickly under the cover, under the hood here. What we see here is the item template, which we developed with you during the implementation process. This is based on analyzing data you might have exported from a current system and what you want to keep of that data so that we can set it up in your Recollect site. And that then directly corresponds to the way that an item view is displayed with the metadata on that right-hand side. So you've got your item number, series, document type and so forth. So here's the actual template here, they're very highly configurable. This is completely blank when we get your site instance. And this is where we create all of those links in that linked data model. Very easy to configure. You can create a new group of items and add a new field. You can swap fields around. So if you wanted the availability to be above the container, that's perfectly possible as well. And you can do bulk updates to ensure that that follows through from that point onwards. If you have a look at the admin panel, this is where you can see the options that you have as administrators or site managers. You've got your site settings, managing content where you can create items, batch uploads, managing your users, reviewing your contributions. You know, reviewing your contributions is an important part. They are moderated and it's up to you as site managers or administrators to accept or deny those. All right, so metadata and storytelling is really best done through this item, I would say. It's an item from the State Library of South Australia with a photograph of two very famous people. They're the first aviators in that first England-to-Australia flight. And again, you can see all of the metadata on that right-hand side. You've got a bio of Keith Smith here. And then again, all of the assets that have been drawn in as backlinks to this information hub. So you can serendipitously browse these. I discovered quite a lot in preparing for this. You know, there was an unsuccessful flight that went down over Corfu and you've got the father of that airman writing letters to the Ministry of Defence demanding inquiries. And you can learn so much about the stories that are really embedded in your metadata through the way that Recollect can link all of your items together. All right, so let's do a bit of a fast segue into Recollect's digital preservation. And Recollect's digital preservation module really has two primary objectives. They are really to protect your data and assets from loss or degradation by actively monitoring and then replacing any degraded files and then ensuring that data remains accessible to your intended audience or preservation pilots, the designated community, with the tools that they might reasonably expect to have available to them. Of course, digital preservation as a larger field includes a whole series of actions and activities required to ensure continued access to digital materials for as long as necessary. But from Recollect's perspective, it really is about regularly monitoring your assets and data for file degradation and attempt to heal that, if any, fail those validity checks. And of course, here are some file, the file types that Recollect can ingest. And Recollect are working all the time to look at file types and any obsolescence issues that come up and work with clients to upgrade those files as those issues come along. So let's jump into a little bit of conceptual theory here. Recollect's digital preservation module is based on concepts of the OAIS framework. This framework is really a guide for preservation planning and development of repositories. And so how does it do this? Recollect, it really incorporates what Recollect does already, which is ingesting data in what is known as a SIP or Submission Information Package, which is really your original digital asset and the metadata related to that asset, which is captured in data spreadsheets, which might be in Dublin Core, Mark or MODS. And it really is just folders with your metadata and your assets, which are then ingested to Recollect. We then move in, once we've submitted that information package as an ingest, we then move into the preservation planning administration stage, which really produces what is known as an archival information package. Now, an archival information package is the original digital file and the webmaster derivative of that digital file, which Recollect creates on ingest, as well as the metadata related to that digital file. So this stage can be really considered as a saying, ongoing management of your digital assets. As you might end up adding more metadata at this stage, some preservation metadata, more technical metadata and so forth. So why are we doing this, of course? We're doing this so that your community can access this content. And that's when we come through to what we might describe as a dissemination information package. So the dissemination information package is essentially your digital item. I might just log in here, because I've wanted to show that, which provides your users with the ability to download the metadata and the derivative version of the master archival copy. So that is really your dissemination information item. So how does this do this in terms of the process? Well, Recollect on ingest checks for viruses and it validates all the files against the checksum. A checksum is a unique digital alphanumeric string of numbers, which Recollect will add to your files. You can just go into your originals and you can see the checksum has been made there. And that sticks in the back end of your digital preservation module. And it allows Recollect to then perform validation or fixity checks over an ongoing period to ensure that that checksum is exactly as it should be. But when you're first ingesting content, if the assets fail, the validation steps, whether that's through a virus or the checksum not being the same, the files will be quarantined and the administrator will be notified. And then the administrator can find the original copy and then try and replace that. Step two really is the creation of copies. So once the file's been validated, the preservation module will store that archival master and a backup copy of that archival master in the dedicated location, as I was just describing before. So you've got that full resolution access dissemination copy in a derivative format in a location accessible in the user interfaces I just showed you there, of course, with the metadata as well. So the routine validation or fixity checks, as we like to describe them, this is where the preservation module will, it's normally every 90 days, will create a validation cycle where it'll check all of the digital assets, check their checksums. And once they're validated, it'll mark them as secure. And but if they don't, the system will attempt to heal that corrupted file by copying the archival master over the corrupt file. So once the file's been overwritten, it's marked as healed and shown in the log as such. And this whole process takes roughly about 24 hours to complete. So you know, should, in the worst-case scenario, a corrupt file not be successfully healed, again, the administrator is notified in an email and the file is marked as corrupt in the log, as you can see in this example here. And that's, at that point, it's really that the administrator would investigate an option to replace that archival master with an alternative file. So whether that's out of storage or by using the access copy, that would have to be faced at that time. Suffice it to say, luckily, we haven't had that yet. So that's unlikely to happen, I would say. But let's just have a look in the backend here of Picture Ipswich. We can see the scan results of the digital preservation module. And we can see the most recent scans have all been successful and all of the items are healthy. We'd be glad to hear, or you've probably seen this, Melanie, anyway. But the one that is showing here as being corrupted was actually a deleted file. We worked with Melanie to find out what had happened. It's when Melanie first got the digital preservation module. And the preservation module won't be able to tell whether it's corrupt or whether it's just missing. So it came up with that being corrupted, but always good in the end. It had just actually been deleted. Okeydoke. That's really all I have in terms of a very quick overview of the Recollect Collection Management System and digital preservation module. But really, just as a summary, you've got a very comprehensive dams and CMS there that handles both your digital and physical collections, supports a range of multimedia files, including 3D OBJ files. The preservation module provides that guarantee, so you can rest in peace that your assets and data will remain intact in perpetuity. And those strong community engagement tools allows you to facilitate moderated contributions, to enrich your collections and really, as I was saying before, just really grow and allow access and ownership by your community with your collections. So that's all I've got for you right now. I'm going to hand over to Melanie and Tanya, who I know have been waiting very patiently in the wings. And so over to you then.
Okay. Thank you, Roger. And we're going to start with Tanya. I hand it over to you.
Thanks, Melanie. I'm just going to do a quick acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud peoples. Just give a quick background on the heritage trails. So, oh, sorry, Tanya Jen, I've worked for the City Design Branch, worked closely with Melanie for Picture Ipswich, but we run the heritage program in the city design area. So the heritage trails are part of the Ipswich Heritage Program, which was adopted by the council in the early 1990s. Since that time, 31 paper-based trails have been produced. Those have all been scanned and have been uploaded to Picture Ipswich and are basically a point in time. So we're not going to make any changes to those particular trails. They're there basically for people who could still be interested in the content that's involved in those. We're part of a local government heritage officers network group that meets monthly. And last year, we had a meeting completely dedicated to heritage trails. During that conversation, a lot of the government said that they were no longer going to produce hard copy trails and they were really looking at online heritage trails. There was one council, just because of the lack of technology in their area, were still using paper-based trails. The general consensus was that with a modern trail that you could follow online, you still have the ability to download and print, but you can follow it on a phone or a tablet. So the thoughts on that were that instead of having a printed trail, you could have a bookmark, which is what we've done in our case. So Melanie's holding up, which is difficult to see, but just a little bookmark that's got a QR code on it that leads you straight to our heritage trails page. So we know that our visitor information center at the CMC Rocks this weekend, and they've taken a whole lot of our bookmarks with them that will lead people to different pages on Picture Ipswich. So late last year, we started looking at online formats for heritage trails. One of the early ones we did was Queen's Park, but it was a little bit ahead of its time. And then after that, we moved into our street-based trails. So there's an example there, which is the Nicola Street Heritage Trail. We've used ArcGIS to create the trail itself, which is basically background images with text overlaid on the right-hand menu. You can either click on the little dots on the side or, as Melanie is, you can click on the arrow. We've embedded some links within the document. So if we've got a collection hub on that particular site, when you click on it, it can take you to a complete hub or just to a photograph or a document about that building or place. So we've done, as well as this particular one, we've got another one for East Street, which isn't quite ready yet. We've still got a little bit of work to do on that one. But we've done a couple of story-based maps, also using ArcGIS and also some map-based maps. So if we click on either George Brockwell Gill or the Will Hanky Trail, this is the latest type of trail that we have been creating. So we've managed to get somebody in Picture Ipswich who was a volunteer to do the banners for us. But it's a fairly simple process of just adding a dot onto a map and some text on the right-hand, sorry, left-hand side. So you can put in an historical or a modern photograph. And you can also put in quite a reasonable amount of text. Again, there's links there, so it can take you to a photograph, a document or even a plan. So we do have a plan for this building that if that was all you had, then you can just link to one thing if that's what you think is best for your site. So in the case of this trail, it was a prominent architect in Ipswich, who didn't just do things in the city centre. So you can see by zooming out that we've got some places that are further out in our rural areas. So Melanie could click on either one of the little blue tabs or just scroll down on the left-hand side. So while these are created outside Picture Ipswich on the ArcGIS platform, we're able to, once they're published- to, once they're published, you can copy the link. And then we've actually added that to the homepage with a profile photograph. So the next trail is when you scroll down a little further. I'll get Melanie to speak to these, and these are trails that she's been able to create using Picture Ipswich itself.
Yes, thank you, Tanya. So I'm the digital archivist Anne Horsary, and my main role is to look after the Picture Ipswich collection. So and Tanya and I get to work together most days, every day, all the time. And firstly, it's really a great opportunity to have a website like Picture Ipswich and a product like Recollect one, where we can invite other parts of the council to contribute and put their information up and share that information to a wider public. And as Tanya was saying, we can, even though the heritage trails that we were just showing you, like the Will Hanky one, are created outside of the Recollect product, just because of the nature of the system here, we can integrate and bring that outside website into Picture Ipswich and make it into that seamless link as we link backwards and forwards. We've always liked to push the limits of Recollect as much as we possibly can. And so I thought, well, wouldn't it be great if we can actually create heritage trails within the website itself? So we've created this series here. At the moment, it's architecture, churches and cemeteries, places and suburbs and schools. And the way that we've created them, I'll show you the school one first. So we're using information that is pre-existing within our Recollect site. One of the, another benefit of Recollect is that we do have that control over the templates. So we can create templates for not only different asset types, but also for different information types or collection hubs. So we have a template that is dedicated just for schools that's already existing in Picture Ipswich. We have a template that we just use for architecture. So that's building those collection hubs where we have all of our assets, so all the photos of schools will go into a, be connected through a school template. I'll explain more as we actually have a look at the map. So the other thing that we can do with our templates is we can add geo tags to those templates. So every little red pin here or every blue dot or the yellow dots, as we go into them, they represent one of our schools that has been pinned on these tags. So if I click on, let me, which school shall we go to? We have too many schools. Okay, we'll go into Ipswich North State Schools. So this is sort of like a self-guided heritage trial that we can do. So people can pick which schools they want to go and either visit in person using this or they can visit online using Picture Ipswich and following the links. So this is our, when it comes up on your screen, this is our Ipswich North State School Collection Hub page. And you can see there, item type, it's using the school's template. So we've got a history of the school. We've got the school geo tag, which is how we're linking it to the other map. We have some information, we have our references. Then we have all of the photos that are connected. You are looking at my version of the site, which is why you're seeing all the red text at the moment. It's a school that's had a lot of names, but we don't have that one public. And we've also got some maps and plans and stuff as well and school stuff. As you can see, we can also redact information if we are not ready to make it public yet. I should have checked that and picked the right school. And then we could go back into the school's trails. So this gives you an idea of how many schools in different areas. I'm going to pick, I'm hoping this one will be central. Ipswich Central State Schools, so it's our oldest or one of our oldest schools. And this is a great one as an example to show on a map because it was actually, it moved around a lot. So we have it in multiple locations around town and we can actually tell that story using our maps and our heritage trails as well. But again, our heritage trail map links everything back to this collection hub where you get a whole lot of information about the history of the school and then all the images and all the rest of the content that we have connected to the school. So one of the other ones that we have created is our places and suburbs. And this one here is really fun because even though I haven't finished doing this yet, if you click on one of our green pins, it actually shows you the polygon shape of the suburb as well. So we can then, you can see the size of the suburb and you can click in and have a history of Ambly, which is where the Ambly Ruff Base is located. So a lot of military-based photos there. These are really, really easy to create within Picture Ipswich or within the Recollect site. And wish me luck because I'm going to see if I can actually create one live for you right now. So as I, we've just gone into our page editor, I'm going to add a new page, click on my GeoMap, enable, take my little code. So thankfully, there is very limited coding required to be able to operate this because I am not good at coding at all. Stresses me out too much. So I'm going to make this one business. Businesses Heritage Trail. And business there. Very, very easy. As I said, like the hardest part is that we have to have already created a, the templates and then the, let me find Ipswich for us. There we go. You've already got to create the templates and you have to have created collection hubs that are linked to that. You can even pick a whole lot of different map styles. And so this is my businesses template. And everything that I've got in the businesses template, I've just selected that as the type of data that's geo tagged. I won't, for this example here, put my header and footer and text in, but it's really easy to do as well. Save and exit and fingers crossed I have down the bottom. Refresh my screen. I really hope this has worked. Where's businesses? I did save and exit. Okay. So it's not appearing there at this exact moment, but if it was, you would be able to view it and it would look like this if all the business pins. I knew I shouldn't have created one live. But seriously, that is how quick, if I'd saved it properly, that is how quick and easy it is to actually create the maps and the heritage trails this way, once you've already got your templates created.
So it's like all of the things that are on the Picture Ipswich site, as new schools appear and collections are made for them, it just updates automatically. So it's kind of the beauty about creating it in this format. And now that we're not doing the paper-based trails anymore, we have three different methods of providing heritage trails. But I think that they complement each other, even though, you know, some places will only have one style and we've got probably three or four, even in our hard copy based trails, three different, three or four different formats. So there's plenty of opportunity depending on what systems your councils or groups have to make either, you know, fairly easy heritage trails, I would say.
Yeah, so to either be putting in the paper base that we've already got, just digitising and adding, and there's the four styles that we've had. We've even had one provided to us from a community group, the engineering heritage trail there. So we've added that, that's just a PDF one that you can read through. But also integrating our site with external sites like the ArcGIS to be able to create those story maps and the street heritage trails. But then additionally, to be able to create heritage trails within Picture Ipswich using the resources of Recollect as well. So I think that's everything that we have to say about heritage trials.
I think so, no, I think we're early.
We are, we're on time.
Just take, sorry, I was on mute there. Thank you very much, Tanya and Melanie, that's fantastic. And I think I've sent in some of the comments there. Likewise, we've had some feedback on some of the other participants in that regard as well. So as I had mentioned, we'll go back to our chat box and excuse me, there are a number of people that had some technical difficulties early on with sound and the size of the screen. So hopefully you were able to rectify those. If not, we certainly have made a recording of today's session that we will share with everyone. So hopefully that recording will have everything in the right, in the right order. So I'm just going to scroll down through those and look at some of the other queries other than some of the technical questions that we, or technical issues we had. And I think the first one there comes in from Rachel at RMIT and asking, is there a difference between software as a service that you offer, excuse me, and organisations having their own instance of Recollect? Is there a difference and which does the University of Melbourne use? So just to clarify for everyone, Recollect in all, on all occasions, all instances, is a provisioned as a software as a service. So there are no clients that have their own instance as such installed locally. All clients share the same platform and it is hosted on Amazon Web Services as a software as a service. Scrolling down through again. And then I think Madison Borkman, how can we add this feature to your Recollect site? Madison, I'm not sure which organisation that you're with, but if you are an existing Recollect client, so this is an added module that can be similar to the subscription that clients have. It's an added module that has an annual subscription fee. So we can talk to you further about that or you can certainly contact us and we can go over those costs with you. Again, another question.
What organisation are you from, Madison, just out of interest?
So she's got to type that, Roger. So the other question there from Rachel again is, Roger, if you can please describe the storage setup a bit more, please. Is it digital, is the digital, excuse me, preservation, is it digital preservation level storage?
Yes, it is, Rachel. It's probably akin mostly to, I'd say, the NDSA storage framework. So you've got, you know, three copies in different geographic locations. So when you save those three copies, the module will store the archival master and then create a backup of that archival master. So you've got those two copies there, that archival master then gets stored in AWS Glacier. And then you've got that full resolution copy as well in derivative format, but it is full resolution. So you do have your three copies stored in different availability zones. And of course, the other aspects of that NDSA Library Congress framework is that ongoing managing and fixing checks that is performed on your content as well.
All right, a question here from Gillian Allen, and I think Michael may have answered thereafter, her question was, was that a ArcGIS or ArtGIS?
Oh, yes, Arc with an A R C G I S.
Yes. Thank you for that. Compliment there from Alex Freeman saying, very impressive work, ladies, thank you. Lynette Revelle has a question, I'm interested in the alternative names used in Picture Ipswich as I'm also looking at content where organisations have changed names over time. How are you managing this?
So for us, in that example of the North Ipswich, we were, that's just in our notes section, so it's a note to sell. But we can also, you can just create an extra field in your, in your template saying alternative names. It can be as easy as that and add all those alternative names in that field if you wanted to. But for us, we're putting them in the notes section.
Thanks, Melanie. A question now from David Parker, asking the team there at Ipswich, talking about how you've described a lot of the resources, much of the effort to present all of your trails, but do you have any sort of stats on the usage by viewers and expectations versus figures and numbers on the hits and traffic on those trails?
I don't have any numbers offhand and some of those trails have only just been released in the last couple of days as well, the newest ones. So we definitely won't have any numbers on them.
I mean, I guess with hard copies, it's always the number of reprints that you do. So you can keep records of those and that was mostly used by our visitor information centre. Now that we're moving to that online platform, we just have to wait until more of the public are aware and our visitor team are starting to promote it for us. So we will have stats going forward.
All right, thank you. A question now from Jason Nonus, the front looks great, but what level of functionality does the back of house have? And can it store condition reports, record movement, exhibition history? Question mark. I guess that's one is for you, Roger.
Yes, the answer simply is yes. You can add all of those as attachments to any particular record. And you can also record in the metadata, you know, the condition of a particular object if it's a collection item and any locations that those physical items have moved to. If they're in, if they go off-site to an exhibition, for instance.
Thank you. A question I think also for you, Roger, from Daniel Park, asking, do you support using image files from external sources or is it files, only files uploaded to the system that are supported?
Well, primarily only files uploaded to the system, but you can link to external sites. So you could have, you know, for instance, I know the University of Newcastle with their timelines linked to their, one of their photographic collections from another cloud supplier. I think it's Flickr. So from the timeline, you can jump from time, you can see the image from Flickr and then you can jump through to their Flickr site from the timeline.
And I guess if we're talking about digital, in a digital preservation sense, only images and content in Recollect are preserved, but the link can still be included in Recollect for viewing. Madison's confirmed that she's from Coffs Harbour, so Madison will reach out to you just to talk to you about the digital preservation platform. Question from Rosalie Stafford, is it possible to give a different use, to give different users different levels of access? I'm in a school and we need to be able to make some resources more available to users than others.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's actually a really important aspect of Recollect and why we're doing quite a number of schools at the moment, because it does allow you to provide different level of access to content, be they editors or administrators or site managers. And you can also keep content completely offline as well.
Thank you. And a question from Michael Senior, just wanting to know about how easy it is to migrate content from a system such as ENU, which I'm familiar with, or IMU, which I'm not so familiar with, but maybe Roger you are.
Yes, yeah. So the process of migrating data from one system to another is that we ask you to export data in flat spreadsheets. And we'll then set up the templates in Recollect to mimic or develop the data structure that you have in those previous systems. There is no like-for-like import from ENU straight into Recollect and it appears just by a flick of a button. It really is something that the implementation team, from the client's perspective, is actively engaged in because often, you know, they don't want, you may not want all of the information from a previous system just to appear in your Recollect. So often it's a matter of, in those data workshops, going through and saying, well, what do you want of your previous system to be in Recollect? So often it's a matter of, in those data workshops, going through and saying, well, what do you want of your previous system to be in Recollect? So hopefully that's answered your question.
Great, thanks, Roger. And I think that, oh, somebody's typing now or maybe it's a, a thank you. So if there are any further questions, if somebody, if you did want to type them in now, we've certainly still got some time left in today's session to answer them. Whilst we're waiting for you to do that, I guess I will take this opportunity to thank our guests for today. Both Tanya and Melanie, thank you very much for coming along. And the use of Recollect there with those history trials is fantastic. It displays and it makes such a great interactive platform. So congratulations on the work that you've done there. And thank you, thank you once again for coming along and presenting that or being part of today's webinar.
Thank you for having us.
Oh, that's right, there was a question that I've missed and I did see it earlier and then forgot to read out. That's from Lydia Holmes, just wondering if the system has facial recognition?
Yeah, well, this has come up before, hasn't it, Richard? No, it doesn't. That's not to say it won't in the future, but at the moment, no, it doesn't.
Yeah, no facial recognition. And I think the rest of the comments coming in there now are just thank yous.
I'm actually got a, well, maybe some more people are typing, I've got a question for Tanya and Melanie. In developing these heritage trails, are you actually getting out there with a tablet and actually experiencing what it's like to follow one of these trails?
We normally do, yes. I'd say that we haven't with the Hankie Trail because we just released it yesterday. But they've been developed in consultation with local historians who basically put catalogues of works together for three of our architects. And so it was just a natural progression as part of that project to create the trail. So we haven't, but we probably should.
Yeah. Well, we could definitely use the Nicholas Street one.
We could walk Nicholas Street.
What about any plans to integrate audio?
The Queen's Park is a completely audio trail. And then the others, we haven't. If we've got oral history recordings, we have put some of those sections in. We used to have, up until January this year, we had our own graphic artist who was great at doing all of that sort of stuff, but unfortunately he retired in January. So at the moment, we don't have that expertise, but certainly in the future.
The only thing that is stopping us is.
Resources.
The resources and the amount of other projects that we always have on the go at any one time.
Yeah, which I know is a lot.
All right. Well, I think that's wrapped up all of our questions, but for people that are still online, as we did say before, we will be following up and sending you out a thank you and a link to a recording if you wanted to watch. And of course, including that will be our contact details. Today's presentation, both on Recollect and on the digital preservation component, was a very high-level overview. And we would certainly welcome the opportunity to provide you with a more in-depth personalised presentation of both Recollect and the digital preservation module. So we do encourage you, if you are wanting to see some more higher level detail on either of those two components, to get in touch with us and we'd be more than happy to convene a private presentation of that solution. So again, thank you to both Tanya and Melanie and of course to Christina and Roger for today's presentation. And thank you all again for coming along and attending our webinar, greatly appreciated. And we hope that you enjoyed today's presentation.
Just to confirm, the link will actually be sent out next week. So you'll have a link of the recording, you'll have our contact details. And the actual screen and presentation is full screen. So you won't have any problems going through both Roger and Tanya and Melanie's presentations and we're very clear. So you'll receive those next week.
Great, thank you all, thank you all very much.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Thank you.